All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Chapter 4, Title 30, Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, an agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall and notification of this meeting has been given to the news media. Go ask Mr. Dominic for indication.
Our dear, most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come this evening and see our democracy at work. We thank you so much for the freedoms that you allow us in this great country. We thank you for the blessings you continually bestow upon us. We ask that you be with each and every one of these students here today in this wonderful university and our city administrators as they lead us through this evening and guide us through and show us the workings of our country. Thank you, dear God, for your blessings. Christ may be proud. Amen.
Madam City Manager and Stephanie, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. I guess we can kind of go down, I know we have our names on here, but we can kind of go down the line and introduce ourselves and just appreciate the hospitality and the interaction here between Lander and our City Council. So, I'm Brandon Smith, I've been mayor for about three and a half months. So, I'll let the rest of the veterans tell you how long they've been on here.
Ronnie Abels, Councilman for Ward 6, I'm headed into my ninth year.
I'm Matthew Miller. I was elected in 2016, so I'm still relatively new, so it's just been two years. I'm actually a Lander alumni. I was a music major, and I've been in Greenwood all my life, so...
Ken Wiltshire, I represent for the City of Greenwood, Ward 4, and I've been on council, now be entering my third term, nine years like Mr. Abels, and I'm very excited for you all to be here. I think it's a great thing.
Good evening. My name is Betty Bowles, and I represent Ward 3 for the City of Greenwood. I'm in my fourth term as being on City Council. I'd like to thank you for having us with you today to share in the things that we do for the city.
Good afternoon. My name's Linda Edwards. I represent Ward 2. I have 20-plus years already under my belt, and I'm going in for four more. Glad to be here, hope we can be of some service to you, hope we can answer your questions satisfactorily. Just glad to be here.
I'm Nikki Hutto. I represent Ward 1. I've been on council, pushing 19, going on 20. So, Linda and I and Betty have become fast friends over these years, and again, we're very glad to be here. We look forward to answering your questions. We'd love to have your involvement, and I hope that after this council meeting, you'll be inspired to come see us at City Hall and come listen to the rest of our council meetings, not just a one-time deal. Thank you.
Always welcome. First and third Mondays of the month. What do we have on the agenda this evening? We have a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Bowles. Any discussion or all in favor? All in favor? Approval of the consent agenda is passed six to zero. What do we have next? Great. At this time, we're gonna recognize Lucas McMillan from, Dr. Lucas McMillan, from here. Lander?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome our mayor, members of our City Council, our city staff, and many community members to the Lander University campus. Lander's president, Dr. Richard Costantino, had certainly planned to be here, but the death of a parent of one of our vice presidents has called him away this afternoon to a funeral. In his absence, we are represented by the university's Chief of Staff and Vice President for Governmental Relations, Mr. Adam Taylor, and Mr. Taylor joins me in being very glad to have our city's leaders and city staff on our campus. Lander is very proud to partner with our city on initiatives that assist our students' learning, to increase the quality of life for our faculty and staff, and to enhance the lives of all Greenwood community members. Lander enjoys being a hub of learning and a headquarters for artistic, cultural, and athletic events for the citizens of Greenwood and far beyond it. Tonight's event is part of the Achieving the Promise: Democracy and the Informed Citizen series of events that is funded by a grant from the South Carolina Humanities Organization. The mission of South Carolina Humanities is to inspire, engage, and enrich the lives of all South Carolinians, and we appreciate the organization's assistance in drawing attention to civic engagement across the Lakelands region last fall and this spring. The presence of our City Council here showcases one way for citizens to be engaged in community affairs and to invite reflection upon civic life. We are very proud at Lander of our new City Manager, Julie Wilkie, who is an example as an alumna, who after earning her degree in political science, chose to go to graduate school, pursued that degree in public administration, and is now furthering her career as a public service professional. And we're also very proud of Matthew Miller, who is one example of an alumnus who has run for public office. Ms. Wilkie and Mr. Miller are but two examples of Lander alumni around our state and around our region who are actively engaged in community affairs. We hope that tonight's meeting helps our students to see the real work of local government as well as how decisions at the local level do affect all of our lives. And after some business, we very much appreciate the council's willingness to answer and respond to our students' questions. Everyone in this room, as well as the room below us, Learning Center Room 200, should have a copy of tonight's agenda. You should also have the evaluation form. As part of a grant, we ask that you give us some feedback at the conclusion of tonight's meeting by using that evaluation form. So, I look forward to tonight's business. I thank very much the members of our City Council and city staff who are with us, and we're glad to be at work together. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McMillan.
I'm gonna take a cue from Dr. McMillan and talk really loud. I'm Julie Wilkie, I'm the City Manager, and kind of along with Brandon, I'm relatively new. I was the Assistant City Manager for about nine years, and our City Manager left at the beginning of December, and so I have been in the City Manager role since that time. If there's an evaluation form, I would just ask that you give me all, like, five stars because I'm new. And I recognize that probably everyone in this room is getting Fowles credit, but we appreciate you all being here tonight. I remember getting Fowles credit and trying to jam those in. So, I was hoping that we could come up with something pretty controversial for you guys on the agenda tonight, you know, get some things riled up, but unfortunately, this is kind of a basic, boring agenda. But we are looking forward to the question and answer. I know council is looking forward to that as well. I want to take one minute, if I could, and just recognize that we have a lot of department heads and staff that are in the room. If you guys are a member of city staff or department head, if you'll just stand up, be recognized. These guys work really hard every single day. And I would note, their attendance was optional, and that's a lot of people for optional attendance at an evening meeting on a Monday, so... Okay, our first agenda item is to consider ordinance number 19-003, amending Section 30-207, be in the City of Greenwood, creative ordinances. This is first reading and public hearing. This is related to record ordinance. If you all recall, we discussed this in executive session, I mean, in a work session, that our current city ordinance does not include any language that would require a record owner to release personal belongings from a towed vehicle, and sometimes can cause some issues that the police department is forced to resolve. So, at the request of Chief Brooks, we're asking City Council to amend this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 19-003?
It's not a public hearing. It's just first reading.
Oh, okay. All right, well, do we have a motion?
I have a question. Have we received any calls from any of the record service?
I have not received any calls about this at all.
Complaints or inquiries about the reason we are making this change?
No, I have not. Yes, and we're doing public hearing on both of these, right?
Yeah, we normally do public hearings at second reading.
Yeah, we're doing public hearing on this one at second reading. This is first reading. I haven't received any comments from the public at all. No calls at all.
And this brings us in line with Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Department. All right.
Yes, sir. The county and the Highway Patrol.
Motion to approve, second?
Who's that, the second?
Linda.
Linda.
We got a motion by Ms. Bowles, second by Ms. Edwards. Is the language identical to the, you said, the policies of the Highway Patrol and Sheriff's Office?
Yes, sir.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of proposed ordinance number 19-003? Motion passed six to zero?
The city attorney would like for me to let you all know that he did add one section in here that says "with or without payment," and that is a little bit different from how the Highway Patrol and the county reads, just for the record.
And that was to make sure nobody got blackmailed into paying the fees for the holding the vehicle before they got there. Thank you.
Where do you add that in that sentence?
It's at the beginning, the underlined section. I think you're looking at a memo. If you go to the actual ordinance, you'll see it. We normally have PowerPoint, so you'll have to bear with us as we scroll.
All right, to be on the safe side, I feel like we might, should probably, probably take another vote on that. Tell me, Mr. Page, where exactly that's... Okay. I'm looking at...
There you go.
So, the amendment would be in the ordinance under B hours, the third sentence would start with "with or without payment."
Yes, the underlined section is the new part. So, it would read "with or without payment," at the request of the owner of the towed vehicle or his designated, the record service must immediately release to the owner of the towed vehicle or his designated personal items such as, but not limited to, medicines, medical equipment, keys, clothing, tools of the trade, child restraint systems, and perishable items.
Well, this was, I mean, I've got it in my packet. Is that...
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to... I thought that's something you meant, you added recently.
It's slightly different from the...
I got you.
You said it's identical to the Sheriff's Department Highway Patrol?
I got you.
That first industry clause was "without payment," the only difference, just to clarify.
I don't know that we need another vote on it. I thought you meant you added it today.
Because they're "with or without payment," they're saying whether or not I paid the tow fee, I'm still allowed to get my belongings out of my car.
Chip says it's introduced. Under New Business Number 2, consider ordinance number 19-004, amending ordinance number 03-10, zoning ordinance Chapter 6, supplemental regulations, Section 6.1.3.3, construction and maintenance. This is first reading, and I will say that typically, we do public hearing at first reading on zoning changes. However, with the change in venue, we thought it would be better to hold public hearing until the second reading. Phil Lindler can be with us tonight, but Chris Hudson is here, and if you have any questions about this particular ordinance, you can answer them. If you want to just give a quick overview, Chris?
I'd be glad to. Do you want me to step up there and do it?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see such a good turnout. We wrote this ordinance, well, I'll tell you a little bit about what I do. I've done commercial review, started my 12, almost started my 12 year with county and city. So, I authored this. It kind of falls into three or four categories, maybe. You know, you have those large developments that come into town, and they've got deep pockets, and they don't mind building, you know, loaves and, you know, large-scale developments of that nature, and they build cities of parking. Then you have folks that are smaller, folks that still want to build their own business, still want to build their own building, but maybe don't have quite as deep a pockets, and parking becomes an issue at that level. They want to do that as cheaply as possible because a lot of times, business owners see that as sort of a marginal thing that doesn't particularly go towards making money. Then you have those folks that are going into an existing building, that have to put up with what was there to begin with, and they don't often want to talk to me about upgrading that parking. And when I say upgrading, I don't necessarily mean adding more, I mean just general upkeep, filling in potholes, taking the grass and weeds out, making sure the lines are all there, amending that number based on use. We have a use-based parking matrix that says for each use, you have a number of parking spaces that are required. So, that becomes a difficulty, and we saw some sort of gaps in the ordinance where folks were not required, we could not point to a place in the ordinance and said, "Thou shalt fill in potholes." So, potholes, as they do, start small and get bigger and bigger and bigger, and over time, you know, your four businesses down the way on the same piece of parking, and depending on the use, you've got large-scale trucks and that kinds of things, that kind of thing going in and out, and the situation just worsens. So, the language that you see before you addresses all of those concerns, sort of unifies the design of that parking at every scale of development, whether it be just infill development in a given building or all the way up to something new build that's on a very large piece of property. So, I'll be glad to address, I don't want to walk through the entirety, I know you guys have worked on this. If you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to do that, or we can walk through the whole thing if you'd like. Nobody gets as excited about parking as a planner.
Is this something that's gonna be able to be enforced to businesses already existing, or is it gonna have to be going forward?
It will not. All of those types of questions for past businesses, if they're still in existence, will go on just like it is. This will go into place as a change in use occurs. So, we would already do a parking evaluation, as I said, where you use base, so if you went from a retail to a restaurant, we would redo that number. This will give us a chance to redo the design and maintenance as well. Specifically, the maintenance, which becomes a real issue. The only thing that isn't really a maintenance issue that maybe is a design issue is we've asked for some of the smaller-scale car dealerships, specifically used car dealerships, to pave that area where they park those cars so that it's a little safer, a little better, just for ingress and egress, folks walking around, that kind of thing. It brings them in line with the larger businesses that already do that on their own.
We just kindly ask them to, the existing ones?
We, I, often do ask them to, and sometimes folks are amenable to that. You know, I'm not looking to bill by business owners. They want their places to be as nice as they possibly can. Greenwood's an attractive business climate, thanks to the work you guys do, thanks to the work County Council does, and we're a friendly office in that regard. But when push comes to shove, those dollars sometimes are tight, and without an ordinance to back that up, you know, I can only smile so wide, so it may not be done.
But the ones that are grandfathered in, we don't have any, besides asking them, we don't have any teeth to...
That's correct. It won't go back, it won't go back and be retroactive in any respect, but those uses change fairly often, and I think there's a sort of a hidden pressure in that, that, you know, you don't want to be the only kid on the block that's not upgrading those services. And as we build that pressure to set a consistent standard, I think it encourages folks to comply even when they don't have to. I've seen that, and that happens, and over time, that's what we're kind of looking for as well.
Two questions, Chris.
Yes, sir.
So, the one at the Waffle House there beside the buckstove pool, that's...
Yes, sir.
Can't touch it until it changes hands?
Not at the present time, but that has changed hands in the past, and I know that owner is desirous to do what we've asked him to. You know, he moved from, over across from Salvation Army was where he used to be, and sort of that row of shops, and he did everything we asked him to there, and he did everything that I could ask him to at this location. That business is one of the ones that's an impetus for some of the changes that we've asked for. At the present time, we've been talking about these for a while, and that one, we could only ask it for so much. In that instance, it was two parking spaces based on the size of his showroom floor or office, and that's all we could get, and we were lucky to get that. But I think as time goes by, if he's successful there, I think we'll be able to say we need to come to the standard.
So, then the second question is the aprons is the connecting part, but if you've got a handicap, we're saying they have to pave a handicap place?
Yes, sir. We've always asked for that.
Are they going to pave a, because you don't want a handicap person, say, Ms. Edwards may be with her walker, you don't want to come off a paved space and go into gravel?
That's what we're trying to do away with specifically, is that type of thing, where we had no way to ask for that in the past. Our handicap spaces are pretty much ADA boilerplate language. We've just echoed that and brought it right down into our ordinance, and where we deal with that is the size, the design, depending on whether you want to make those shared spaces or separate, and their proximity to the doorway of the office or showroom in this respect. That was all we could ask for because that's what ADA language was. We felt the same way you did, that it doesn't do a whole lot of good if you've got an ADA space, they're not necessarily heading into an office, they like to go out and look at any outdoor retail, the cars specifically, and you kind of negated the usefulness of the parking if folks can't get around on uneven, unpaved surface.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that kind of was my question, if there's already a requirement for handicap spaces to be paved under the ADA or the...
Yes, sir.
But we don't have any tools to enforce that?
No, we do, we do, I wasn't clear. It's the connectivity with the rest of the lot that we didn't have the tools to enforce. We always have enforced the ADA requirements of the spaces, number, size, configuration, design details, whether they're shared with a central loading/unloading zone for wheelchairs, that kind of thing, and the location in relation to the door, which ADA, the ADA language says that your space, your handicap spaces must be the closest space to the door, regardless of where you have your spaces. Doesn't say they have to be adjacent to the door, doesn't say they have to be adjacent to a ramp, but it does say they have to be the closest to those facilities. Past that, in these instances where we're trying to amend that language, we didn't have any way to say, for example, if you were headed out to look at a car on the other side of the lot, that what was between your ADA space, which we enforce today, and that car on the other side of the lot was safer passable. And that's what this language will hopefully fill in that gap.
I guess what I'm asking is, what it looks like you're adding is all parking spaces for disabled persons must be paved as required in Section 6.1.5. Certainly in favor of all spaces for disabled persons being paved, but if that's already an ADA requirement, is that necessary that we put that in ours?
We already have it in our exception section, so this echoes the section that already exists. We have an entire section that's nothing but parking for disabled folks, and that addresses in greater detail than does this. This just echoes in the construction and maintenance section what we have in the other section of the ordinance that enforce already, just so that as we send these ordinances out, oftentimes, when we get into those initial conversations, we just send the ordinance out for review by the folks that are doing that development. So, this will have that both in the construction and maintenance section where they need to be aware of how that's gonna be asked of them and what is required, as well as the ADA section, which goes into greater detail, particularly from a design standpoint, which is echoed in that 6.1.5.
Okay.
Is this rule...
It does. Thanks, Michael.
Is it literally being enforced, especially the one about disabled persons must be paved? Now, we have existing parking lots.
Yes, ma'am.
That the handicap thing is not at potholes and...
Yes, ma'am, we sure do, and that's why as those businesses change hands or uses, it actually is not even tied to the change in ownership, it's tied to the change in use. So, that if, as those change in uses occur, we can step in with this ordinance and enforce that language. And that's another reason we wanted to echo that handicap language in two places, is so that we wouldn't have any, for lack of a better term, loophole in the thinking. It's not that folks, that I think, there are bad actors, of course, in all facets of life, but most of our business owners want to comply, particularly with that. It's just a matter of money sometimes, and we want to put some teeth in the ordinance to make sure that that parking gets the same attention that handicap ramps do, that with the doorways do, that with the parking spaces do. So, we hope to amend those as time goes on.
This is not really, has anything to do with the design. This is just the keeping it up, maintaining it, keeping the potholes filled...
Yes, sir.
And keeping the lines marked and that type.
Yes, sir. That's correct. This is primarily construction and maintenance. The only place we reference anything having to do with design is referencing the section on handicap design, 6.1.5, because, like I said, we wanted to hit that one specifically.
And I guess just reading 6.1.3.3A, in the inverse, non-handicap spaces, in the situation where there may be some overflow parking, could still be in grass?
We have encouraged that, we have encouraged that as, two ways, pervious paver is what we're really pushing toward. If you do overflow parking, we hope that you'll still do something that's a little safer, a little more uniform than is crusher run or even grass, but will allow for some water to get through that element because all of our required parking is impervious, it's gotta be paved, asphalt or concrete. So, that, excuse me, that overflow parking, we have tried to maybe give some folks the option to do something a little different because that marries up with our 75-25 pervious and pervious ratio. You've got to keep 25% open space, and our engineering department does that. We've also referenced, if you'll note, the stormwater regulations, and that goes directly towards the stormwater review done by the engineering department. So, they have that option on overflow parking to maintain both a stable parking surface and some idea that water is handled where it falls, rather than getting in your back pocket, making you redesign your catch basin or having that runoff, particularly for parking lots because that's a point source problem where you've got oil and all the stuff that comes out of cars, and then you get a first flush rain and boom, that's right into the storm sewers, and that's not where anybody wants it. So, it's got that stuff.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 19-004.
Second? Do we have a second?
Yes. Here you go.
We have a motion by Ms. Bowles, and a second by Ms. Edwards. We have a motion by Ms. Bowles and a second by Ms. Edwards. All in favor of proposed ordinance number 19-004? All opposed? Motion passes in the interest of... All right, what do we get next?
All right. New business number three is to receive questions from Lander University students and provide answers. So Dr. McMillan was kind enough to gather questions in advance. So rather than having students come up here, stand up and ask their questions, I have them here. In the interest of time, I've gone through and kind of selected some that I think cover a pretty wide variety of topics. And so I'll read the question. I feel like that's like a political debate between the moderator.
Look, it's good, being moderator.
So I'll read the questions out and then you guys just chime in.
Good.
Okay.
All right. And if the student's name is listed, I'll give their name. If not, some of these are just anonymous questions. So question number one is, how would you encourage students to become more involved within the community?
Well, I, I know of several, I'm just going to speak from personal experience. I know several Lander students who are in the art department. And they are very involved in the arts organizations that we have here in town. And they have received not only vows credits, but they've also received internships, which are great on resumes for job and job skills. And so we have had at the Art Center, a variety of, and we've very much enjoyed Lander students that have come. And they come to listen to the artist, artist lectures. They work, they get gallery experience, they get actually fundraising experience, how to do a fundraiser. So I've had personal experience and I believe that the Lander students that are in the art department at Lander that have become involved have really enjoyed, we, not only have we enjoyed and benefit from their expertise, but vice versa from ours and that organization. So there are organizations that are, would welcome and actually seek student involvement. And believe it or not, a lot of the nonprofits, there is opportunity for business majors because nonprofit is an industry. And they're, they're looking for funds and it has to be run like a business. So there are internship possibilities with industries in Greenwood, nonprofits in Greenwood. If you have an interest in music and theater and art, the arts organizations are always looking for people. So there are things, and believe it or not, we have receptions that are free and open to the public. We feed you. I mean, so free of charge and no students like to eat. So you can become involved. And as I said, when we started this, you know, our meetings are open to the public. If you want to know what's going on in the city of Greenwood, the door is open. And you can come and sit. And some of them are very, meetings are very interesting. So we also have Laura Hudson here, who's the Uptown manager. She has, there's free concerts, you know. I know some of the music may not appeal to you, but she's, her door is open too. If you have bands that you want to do or suggestions for open air concerts, you know, come talk to her. Our visitors and tourism directors here. The Chamber, okay, The Chamber and Uptown, they're always seeking volunteers for the Festival of Discovery, for the Festival of Flowers is a volunteer organization. Y'all can volunteer, any one of you. You could be stuff entopiers at the greenhouse. You could learn horror culture from horror cultural people. So there, there is a way that you can enrich yourself, get educational internships and real life work experience. That's how you get involved in the community.
I think just having been here at Lander for the, not four years, it was five years that I was here. From, from that time, there are a lot of things I've noticed now where there are more opportunities to be connected to the community than when I was here. And it hasn't been that long. I graduated in 2013. But, you know, you have transportation now that'll take you uptown and take you to different places in Greenwood. But I just, you know, you're all tech savvy and you can go on Facebook. But I, I'd encourage you to, you know, follow the City of Greenwood's Facebook page or Uptown Greenwood, the Zerzen Tourism. They all have really good social media presence. And, you know, you can see what's going on. And there really are, like Nikki said, there are things all the time. This is our second weekend at the Community Theater of Oklahoma. And I know there are a good number of music majors that are involved and a couple that aren't music majors that are involved in that show. And we've got some alumni involved in that show. And, you know, we, we try to get Lander students involved in those things uptown as, as much as we can. But definitely if you, you know, I know you're all probably on your phones all the time like I am. So, you know, just, just follow those pages and, and, you know, you can definitely see what's going on and opportunities that are out there.
I would say...
I'm sorry. I was also gonna, gonna say that Ms. Hutto and Councilman Miller has good recommendations and suggestions. But to simplify what you could do, those who, you can just contact the city manager and let her know that you're willing to volunteer your services. And what we can do can notify you when there's a need because we have several festivals, we have several things that's going on all during the year that we would, I mean, I'm sure they would be, she would just be excited to have some extra volunteers, especially for the Festival of Discovery and the Festival of Flowers. I mean, we'd be begging and pleading. I mean, it's a little warm and it's a little hot. But it would be very rewarding because you'll get to meet so many different people from all over the world, all, all over. So just contact our city manager, Julie Wilkin, and give her your name and number. And, you know, we can contact you.
Or our new assistant city manager.
I'm working on that.
Ryan Thomas. Yes.
Laura asked me to mention too that we always have internship opportunities, particularly in the summer, what Ms. Bowles is talking about. We're, we're a government, we don't have tons of money. So we really like free interns. And I know sometimes you have to do free internships for school credit. I, I did many myself. So there are lots of opportunities to be engaged, for sure.
Well, I was gonna say, they've all given you great ideas. But I would say, first of all, to become involved in your community, you need to know your community. There's a whole big another world on the side of Lander College, University. You need to know each other. You need to know who live in your community. Who is your next door neighbor? You'd be surprised, there are a lot of people that live next door and don't know their next door neighbor. You want to become involved in your community? Find out who your next door neighbor is, what's going on. And one important thing, now you all are here for this council meeting. Now, we'd like to see you on March the 11th. That's a way to get involved in your community. Know what's going on. Don't always depend on somebody else to tell you because they're not going to give you the whole story. They're going to give you the good part. Now, we are kind of civil to each other, but council meetings get rowdy sometimes. That's because each one of us have a different opinion. And I believe in my opinion, I'm gonna stand firm in my opinion. So, you know, it gets a little heated. But when we finish, we all still love one another. At least we act like we do. That's all I can say. But we'd like to have you involved in the community. You'd be surprised. Get involved while you're here. If you don't go home over the summer, there's plenty of work. City manager puts you to work. Finds something for you to do. But I say get involved. But to get involved, know your community. Know who lives next door to you. Know who lives across the street. Know who lives down the street. How many of you know how many people live on the street over from the, from here? That's community. You know, do you know them? Do they know you? Get involved.
I want to thank those of you, especially those professors that have brought people. I know that in Lander, there was a big, a lot of you at the Arts Center the other day when we had an exhibition. So I know your professors bring you on. I know a lot of you have probably helped at Gray Street Park. And that's mostly been through the, the physical boys, the basketball and all those sort of guys that have helped out there. But Mr. Naub, Mr. Klaus, would you stand up, please? This is a gentleman. How old are you, Klaus?
How old am I?
Yeah.
Eighty-eight.
He's eighty-eight. And he handles all the caretaking, all the, all the groundwork, all the weed pulling for all the parks that are currently in around about us, Gray Street, West Cambridge. This is the guy that does it. Do you think he needs some help? Do you think you can help him? There's one of the ways you can get out. And I'm not going to steal the mayor's, thank you, Klaus, you can sit down now. I'm not going to steal the mayor's funder because I know he's got something else. But another thing you need to think about, those of you that are Greenwood residents, the fact that you're here today, you've shown that you're wanting to help the community. So why not run for election? There's so many people now, no young people are joining the police force. No young people are joining the fire. No young people are coming forward into horrible word, politics anymore. Why not? So the fact that you're here and you're in these classes, I know some of you are here as prisoners because you've got to be here for whatever it is that duly talked about. I'm, I'm British, so I have no idea about... And so now's your opportunity. I mean, this is not always as boring as you saw. You know, sometimes it's actually, we get into real scrums and fights. So, you know, you've taken the first step. So now's your chance to get going.
Yeah, I think you can tell Mr. Bullshires' passion, being someone who was not born in this country, that came here and takes, takes it seriously, doesn't take it for granted. There are so many opportunities to, to get involved. I don't want to sit here and sound like we're preaching to y'all. Y'all gotta do this, you gotta do that. Because, I mean, certainly I would love for it to be more interactive than that. But I, I'm, I'm probably stretching it a little bit. But I feel like it really wasn't that long ago that I was sitting in the same seats y'all were. So I understand, especially ones that I was going to get folks to raise their hand if they were, you know, here just for a credit or what. But I won't, I won't put y'all on that spot. But I feel like there's, even in the, the 20 years since I was in college, there's just so many more opportunities that are, that you're aware of through, through social media. I mean, whatever your passion is, I know they, they've been mentioned before. But, I mean, if it's, if it's helping with nonprofits, we've got places like Meg's House, Beyond Abuse. Mentioned The Chamber of Commerce, Parks and Trails. I, I remember Klaus, the, the softball team came out a few weeks ago and, and helped out. And so if you've got a team or a group, there's, I mean, there's just, and, and I get it too. I mean, that sometimes it's, there's so many opportunities, you're, you're almost wondering where to begin. But there's, I'll tell you, there's literally something every single night of the week if you want to get involved. I'm, I've got three kids, so sometimes I have to politely back and say, say no every once in a while. But one of our, and, and I don't know how many of y'all read the Index Journal on a regular basis. And I don't know if Vincent's still, still here. But, but, but the, but trash is, is one of our big initiatives. Not just the city, but the county. And so we've got a lot of different groups, whether it's Keep Greenwood County Beautiful, Palmetto Pride, Adopt a Highway. My wife, her initiative is, she's Trash Time with Tara. Once a month, she gets on and tells, tells us where we're going to go in the city and pick up trash. We welcome y'all. We, we picked up Mathis Road this past Saturday. And we have 35 people, that gets done in no time. And that, and Mathis Road, I considered ground zero in terms of our, our trash problem. And I've, again, I'm, it's kind of a pet peeve of mine, but I, I've really come to understand the direct correlation between cleaning up and improved quality of life. And that's a, that's a little thing you can, you can do. So again, I was sitting in your chair not that long ago and I probably would not have been one to volunteer. I had better things to do, more fun to get into and fraternity in my, you know, whatever. So I just applaud y'all being here and hopefully be even more involved than I was 20 years ago.
Anybody that wants to get involved in community activity, there's dozens of nonprofits that would just love to see you come knock on their door and ask them, could you help them? Because they're, they're needing people to, and they'd love young people to come out because they're all energetic and ready to go.
It is nightlife too. I know that's probably where that question comes from. Okay. The next question comes from Najah Jones. Hope I got that right. Lander student population is growing. How is Greenwood adapting to that and how is it affecting the community?
It's affecting the community because we don't have enough rental property. Plain and simple. And we don't have enough quality housing, other than campus housing, for a growing student body. And that's, that's a definite issue. Because I know lots of you probably, you might live on campus the first two years and then you're, you're looking around to find someplace to rent. And, you know, I, I get call, I mean, it's why we unanimously passed another development that's coming to town because we need quality rental property for the growing student body at Lander. You can't grow if you can't live here. I mean, some of you can't commute. And I know there's a large commuting base, but some, even some of you who do commute would love to be able to have campus housing or housing that's close to the university that would be adequate for you at an affordable rate, safe, affordable housing. It's an issue across the entire state. It's not just Greenwood. So that's how it's affecting the community. And we're pushing and there are several business leaders that develop, we're asking developers to come here. And there's, there's a pushback too. There's a pushback from residential communities that say, you know, it's going to be, you know, we don't want multifamily, we don't want apartments. There's too much traffic, there's, but it's, it's a give and a take. And, you know, we're talking, the reason why it's a balancing act to find that happy balance of not overbuilding for infrastructure and, but also providing housing. So we're pushing. We just passed, so we're pushing for housing. And again, it's something that the college itself has to look at. You know, if, are they providing enough for their freshman and sophomore classes? So that's a, that's, that's an issue where the community has to talk together about what the university is providing as compared to what the community is providing.
Yeah, I've, I've had many conversations with Adam and President Cosentino, very forward-thinking folks in terms of growing land or to, to follow up to what Ms. Hutto's mentioned. We, we certainly want to continue to develop Greenwood, but we, we're, we're trying to do it responsibly. Do it with the, the least amount of impact possible to, to neighboring communities. And that's something that we take very seriously. That when, when there's a neighborhood that's upset about other development, we certainly listen to what they, they have to say because that's, I mean, that, that's where local government makes decisions that affect people directly. So, so yes, we're, we're trying to do something about the, about rental properties. Make, make, make sure there's, there's an open atmosphere to, to build responsibly.
As you know, you've got a very active president in President Cosentino. He doesn't know how to stand still, really, essentially. I met with him the other day and I showed him, we're being proactive here in terms of trying to see what we can do together as a, two different communities. And I showed him all the empty spaces that we have that may be of some use to Lander's development. And so we threw some ideas about. He's also got some dramatic ideas of his own. And so I'm sure this is going to be dealt with now. Obviously, building takes years, so I don't expect it to happen tomorrow. But is that not quite answering the question that was asked? But that's just information for you on that topic.
And I also like to state that with the growth of Lander University population, it grows the economy, it grows our city. I mean, we, we applaud, I mean, I see the bus riding around Greenwood. I had no idea it transports students in such a various... it transports students in such various places, from the mall to the restaurant to downtown. And, and we truly, as a, as a municipality, we appreciate that. Well, I mean, if you're growing, we're growing. And I just think it's a win-win situation. So yes, it, I just feel like with the growing population of Landor University, it is also growing our, our economy and the city of Greenwood.
When you stay here the weekend and don't go out of town, and if you stay here and you eat at the Mill House, you go to the Buffalo Grill, you basically help, and I'm, I'm, you help us do the things that we've done in the Uptown. Because the reason why we've done that is because you've eaten in our restaurants, your parents who come to visit on Parents Week and sleep in our hotels, okay? So when we get hospitality tax dollars and accommodation tax dollars, we basically can grow and do the things that you've seen in the Uptown. And the only way we can spread from the Uptown to the outlining areas is if people eat out more, stay in hotels more, because that's our only, that is our source of revenue. Property tax doesn't cover, doesn't cover building new buildings or doing new things and renovating. Property tax covers police and fire and sanitation and those basic necessities. So if we want to, the reason why the Uptown is looking the way the Uptown is looking is because we have those other sources of revenue. And those other sources of revenue can only be used to promote things like people coming to Greenwood, people eating in Greenwood, that hospitality tourism industry. So please, stay in town, don't go away over the weekend. Come, eat, eat here, party here, go to the grocery store here, go buy an Old Nick, you know, stay here if you can. That, that helps us do the things that you would probably like us to see here. Because Landor itself, all the nonprofits in town and the city limits, they don't pay any property tax. So every time Landor buys another piece of property, we love you, don't, don't think of this as not loving you, it goes off the tax books because it's a nonprofit. Nonprofits don't pay property tax, but you still need fire and service and certain things. So by you staying here and by people coming to visit you while they're here, that helps our tax base. So it is a very symbiotic relationship. So it's interesting, the more you stay here and the more you spend here, the better it is for all of us.
I'll just add, in addition to staying here on the weekends, and look, I know you have the beach, mountains, whatever, that's a, that's, I, I don't, I'm telling anybody not to go to the beach when they, if they have an opportunity. But we, but in addition to staying here on the weekends, we want y'all to stay here after graduation. And we want to provide an environment where young professionals have job opportunities. We've got tons of industry here in town that's, that, that's, that's mind-blowing in terms of the, the worldwide scope that a lot of these places like Taizhin, Lonza, Fuji, SPF, Caterpillar, they all have. So we want, we, our goal is to provide a, an environment, we're not trying to be Greenville, not trying to be Charleston, not trying to be Atlanta, we're not trying to be anything we're not, but to provide a welcoming atmosphere to young professionals. So if y'all ever have any ideas about how we can do that better, please let us know.
Thirty-eight percent of the acreage, I think I'm right Julie, of the acreage which makes up the city of Greenwood, thirty-eight percent is non-revenue earning. And that's the self-hospital, Landor, Wesley Commons, Carolina Health, all those ones there, churches, et cetera, et cetera. We get no revenue other than Landor provides its own police force, but everybody else has to be covered by us for fire, police, sanitation, without putting into the pot. So that's probably relevant for all of you that are studying business and politics.
Okay, this question comes from Jake Powell and because he's in the front here and he has a name tag on it, I can see that. Ambassador and he's right in my line of sight. I didn't mean to call you out. I feel like Eric Troy knows who you are. So what is the best characteristic a government employee could have when working in local government and why is this trait important to possess?
Go and work for Publix, learn how customer service works. Publix employees stand up. And it's most amazing culture. They teach you, they teach you customer service. Your job as a government employee is customer service. You've got to be outgoing, warm, happy, friendly, most of the time. And so that's why, helpful people, that's what we need in government.
Well, and it's not, it's not like state government or federal government where, you know, you're just, you're seeing it from far off, you're not able to just go talk to that person that you want to talk to. Even if you call somebody in a, you know, in a government office to talk, to talk with them, you're not going to talk to them, you're going to talk to their staff. But here, you know, you can call any one of us, our phone numbers are on, on the city website. And, you know, all the city staff are every day seeing people direct, they're seeing the people that they, they deal with on a daily basis. And, and you know, that's, that's key definitely is, is customer service. And you know, that's what helps us grow business, that's what helps us grow relationships with, with Landor or, or the hospital, you know, and, and help, help us grow the town to what we really want it to be.
Sometimes you have to be a good listener.
Absolutely.
Sometimes people just want to talk. You don't have to say a word, just listen. I want to be heard. I don't want you to say anything, but I want to be heard. You have to be a good listener. People got to have faith and confidence in you. What's the word? If I tell you something in confidence, I expect you to keep it. You know, they want to know, you see a lot of times on TV where somebody's told a politician something, he's told ten people, then it becomes, the media knows about it and there's a media frenzy. By the time it gets to the media, the real question is never asked because it's been changed five or six times. So sometimes you have to listen to people. Another characteristic, you got to have a gift of gab. You got to talk. People want to hear you. When they talk, when I talk to you, I want you to respond. And then most of all, you got to be able to take criticism because they shoot them at you. You know, all of us up here, at one time or another, we've had people to tell us, you're not doing anything. I'm not doing anything, neither are you because you didn't run for this position. You know? That's what I tell people, if I'm not doing anything, then you get up and you run. Don't sit back and talk. You know, being a politician, when I first came, threw my hat in the ring twenty years ago, I didn't mean to stay this long. But I'm still here, I enjoy what I'm doing. Next times I talk and I disagree, and don't look at me, Miss Bowles. But what I'm saying is you got to love what you do. It makes a difference. But we're telling each, eating every last one of you sometime or another, if you choose to stay in Greenwood, live in Greenwood, when these positions come over, we getting old. We are getting old and we recognize that fact. Throw your hat in the ring, be on the other side and see how it feels. Matthew, no, he, Matthew is about the youngest one we have on here, so just give him another year or two.
Yeah, I echo everything that Ms. Edwards said and, and when she mentioned, you know, we're the ones actually doing the job. Trip Badgett, our, our city attorney, gave me the Teddy Roosevelt's, The Man in the Arena. If you've never read it, I would, I would ask you, do yourself a favor and read that, it's about public service and, and criticism that you receive. I'm, I'm a naturally a pretty sensitive guy and so I've had to get some thick skin as well. But I would encourage y'all to, if you don't remember anything else, Teddy Roosevelt's The Man in the Arena.
The one thing that seems like the nation does not have a grip on, but local government does, and what I love so much about city council is that we're nonpartisan. There's no, we, we basically as a group, look at the city of Greenwood and say as a group collectively, what is the best thing for the city of Greenwood? And if we don't all agree, we still have respect for each other, we compromise when we need to, we listen to all sides of the story and we do it, I think, with the general consensus, what's best for Greenwood as a whole. Greenwood is so small that you can't just say, oh, this is good for my ward or this is not good for my ward or why is this ward getting it? So there's a balance. And I think to be a good public servant, you, you have to be balanced and think of things, it's not just, I got to win, but how can this be a win-win for all of us? And so by looking at that and basically subduing your individuality for the good of the whole is a key factor in local government. And I wish at the state level and at the national level, they could take a page from local government.
The only thing I need to say is that we represent all the people, all the people, not just one certain group, but we represent all.
Even furnace.
So I know non-city council, but as a government employee, I would say they have to have a lot of tact. And that comes with maturity too. I mean, when I first started as local government or in government, you know, I was young, but once you, you can't say whatever you want to say. It's not like you own your own car wash. Some guy comes to your car wash and you don't like his haircut, you say, no, I don't like your haircut. And he says, fine, I'm not going to get my car washed here. It doesn't, doesn't work that way. So I would say you have to have a lot of tact, bite your tongue a lot, and like they said, you have to listen a lot, so. I'm going to skip around a little bit.
I was going to say, I thought that might segue into the next question a little.
Well, y'all want me to ask that one? I just, in the interest of time, I'm trying to move, but I'll ask this one. This is probably like a one-word answer for you guys. What's the hardest part of your job as a member of city council?
Funding.
Funding.
Yep.
Yeah.
Funding. Where's the money?
I, I'd say that I'd, I'd, that I'd go along with what Julie just said though is because as, as somebody that is young and I can get, I can get very emotional when it comes to talking about politics or even on this level, local things, that I, it's really hard to sit and listen to what people have to say without jumping at, at the first, you know, possibility to say something. When I was campaigning two years ago, it was, you know, what election it was and whatever you think about, about that election, there were a lot of things people felt like they could say. So I was campaigning in my ward and I heard things that I didn't agree with at all. And I just kind of had to sit and say, well, that doesn't, that doesn't, maybe not matter totally, but like Nikki said, we care about Greenwood. I'm running because I care about Greenwood. I'm not running because of state politics or, or who's going to be president. I'm running because I care for the city. And I think that was the toughest thing for me.
What about close in age? Tact is a little bit harder, like I said, the more, the older you get, you get more tact.
He does a good job.
Maybe not, some people lose tact, doesn't it? I say all the time, you know what, I say all the time, my grandma's like eighty-four and I, I'll say whatever she wants, she's old, you know.
Ma does a good job of defending our honor on, on social media.
Yes. Okay. So we're going to jump down a little bit. This, this question was actually asked by several students and there were several questions related to violence. I'm just going to kind of pick one that kind of encompasses them all, which is what is being done to stop drug distribution, gang activity in Greenwood and what's specifically being done to protect Landor from the issue of rising crime?
Well, we had a lot of meetings with the county. And we found out a lot in terms of, we saw there was lots of, as we've talked about, organizations that could help a lot of people, but I think it, I don't know if we can literally sit here and say, solve the problem. It's easy to say it's societal, cultural, whatever, but we have it. I'm a big proponent of police. I think we need one heck of a lot more policemen in the city of Greenwood. And he didn't pay me to say that. And that I think is one of the solutions. I think you have to have a much more reactive police force. I think they have to be very visible. I think they have to be seen. And I think that is one of the ways that our big problem is just getting one policeman costs a whole lot of money when you go into pensions and medical insurance and equipment and the car and everything else. So it's, it, funding is always a problem, it's one of our major problems. But I think that a higher visibility in the city and in lots of areas of the city would help somewhat. And I don't, other than that, I'm not clever enough to have any other answer than that.
Well, I think one thing that came out of a lot of the meetings that we had with the county and with a lot of nonprofit leaders, and, and this connects back to being involved in the community too, is that, you know, as the city and the county, we, we have, we're tight on funding a lot. We don't have what we're supposed to get from the state government, so we have to decide what we need to fund and what we, what we can't fund. And, and so I think that when it comes to being involved in your community, then, you know, there's, there's one thing that would really help to be involved is that, is that there are a lot of nonprofits that can get youth involved in the community. And it's not something that's going to take effect now, because there are things that haven't been supported for the last decade or more maybe, and now you see a, a lot of youth that have grown up and don't have those opportunities. So, you know, who's saying what, what they're going to end up doing? So, you know, we have to work now to get people involved in organizations that help children and help with education and community involvement. And, you know, ten years from now, we'd be in a lot, a lot better position than, than we are now.
Also.
Go ahead.
Drugs is a, is a serious problem for Greenwood. And we continue to work with our law enforcement in supporting everything that they do. They're doing with, with what they, with what they have to work with as far as the number of police officers, that's difficult when you have a, us four different crimes going on in four different sections of Greenwood. So yes, we do need more officers. We also need the help from the community as well. If you see something, say something. But we have a situation where we see things and everyone is afraid to, to say something. And that would help a lot to solve some of the crimes and some of the things that are going on within our city and our communities. Also, I feel that we, the law needs to change. The law, the prosecuting law needs to change for the state of South Carolina. It's, it's, it's set up where it's that, it's just a revolving door for, for, for violence, for, for persons who are arrested for different crimes. They, we sometimes look at a situation where there's a report where a person been arrested fifteen times and they're still walking around unstrapped. So the, the laws for South Carolina, and this is some, this is where you can help us and help local government and state government, write your legislators, demand requesting for the change in law, study the law, see how the, the process works when, when there's a crime is, is committed. I mean, I was, I was devastated. I mean, how can you be walking around as a civilian with three charges for attempted murder? So until that law change, that will make a difference as well. That's the way I feel.
That was like I had stated in the beginning, know your community. Know who's coming in and who's going out. There has never been a community that I've lived in that I didn't know. My kids used to tell me, Mom, they gonna blow your brains out. I said, well, they'll blow me out looking. It's not because I sit here and didn't say anything. You know, you have, have instances where people see things and by the time the officer get there, fifty people can be standing out there and nobody saw anything. And the first thing we attempted to holler is, the police aren't doing anything. But what is the community doing? But what is the community doing? Somebody saw something, but we're not telling anything. And like Ms. Bowles said, I say all the time, you'll go to county council meeting and pack it out. You'll go to city council meeting and pack it out, when there are issues you don't agree with. But nobody goes to the state house and pack it out, and let your legislator know, I'm just tired of you, the laws you, you're dealing with, you need to leave that alone for a little while, and straighten out what you already have on the book. There's no sense in keep adding laws, and they are not being enforced. You know, they went back in session, and I just said, well, here we go again. Going round and round, we looking for new laws, and we got all these old laws. And I know Chief Brooks get tired, 'cause he picking up the same people over and over, just to slap them on the hand and send them out. And they are the very ones that cause problems in your neighborhood. If you, if you've never been to court, Lee Miller or Judge Brown would love to have you. You'd see, their hands are tied. And why? Because of the law. And it don't make no sense. I agree with Ms. Bowles, somebody been arrested five times for attempted murder. What you waiting on, them kill them? And then we gonna do something? You know, it's sad. We in a sad state, so you know, we got to get up and do something. We got to give them all the help we can.
But that's a very, very wise lady down that side of me there. And that's one of the key things to everything that you all share now as millennials, in that you've got all these things you're not communicating about. You're not communicating about depression, you're not communicating about suicide, you're not communicating about attempted rapes, you're not communicating about drug use, you're not communicating about when you see a crime and saying to somebody, some police officer, it was that car, that was the license, it was white, it was red, it was green, it went that way. And all these things are connected. You all got to talk to each other. And talking to each other, you have power, you got to talk to each other, you got to communicate. All these things that I just mentioned are rampant through. And the only way to solve it is everybody being a village, and talking to each other, and raising the children of the village.
Yeah, what's, what's frustrating to follow up to what Ms. Bowles was mentioning, just without boring y'all too much, a lot of these, the folks that get arrested, the bail bonds rates are so low, they can get out with, with really no problem. And so, you know, as a city, we could sit here and establish a minimum rate for, for bail bonds, but they just go out in the county. And then, so it's really something that statewide needs to be addressed. But, I mean, it was, safety in Greenwood was my number-one campaign issue there in, in 2018, and remains my number-one issue. It's, it is, it's always a pleasure to, these last three months to serve as mayor, but there's certainly those things that, that keep you up at night. And we're not, we're not unique in our problems here in Greenwood, but what we're trying to be is unique in our solutions to these problems. And, you know, it, it's, I think, again, I don't want to talk in too many generalities, but it's about giving this next generation hope, like Mr. Miller said, so that we don't have fifteen years from now, the same, trying to break that cycle. And, and I'm a big fan of our, of our law enforcement, but I, I don't know that we necessarily need a police state either. We could absolutely use more police officers, officers to help, but it, it, I don't know that if you had a police officer for every single person, I mean, it, it's about fundamentally changing some behaviors from, and breaking that cycle as well.
What plans are being made to help fix roads and infrastructure in the city? Some of our potholes are really bad. Can you push for more funding, or is that strictly county business? And, and for your benefit, several students asked that question.
That's a worded, that's a worded question.
But start with, most of the roads in the city are not the city's, they belong to the county, or they belong to the state. So we can only fix the roads that belong to the city, and we do that through funds that are gathered from gasoline tax, it goes to the state house in Columbia, and they send us it back, and then they allocate it around and about. We get, on average, about $300,000 a year, and with that, I don't know if anybody knows how much it costs, it's very expensive to put asphalt down and do roads. But with that, we choose selectively, very carefully.
The worst of the worst.
The worst of the worst, and we do that. But some of the wards that are really bad are state roads, like Laurel Avenue, I mean, that is one that came up the other day, and, and that is not, we can't do anything about that, because that's a state road.
So actually, you need to complain to the city, the county, and the state, depending on which the road, which road it is.
We're, we're unique in that, I think, if you don't know that. With South Carolina, a lot of states, you know, this, either the counties own, I mean, it's, it's really the counties or the cities own a lot of their roads, whereas in South Carolina, there's a load of roads that are, are state-owned. And we could fix them, but we don't, we have a limited amount of money, so it's hard for us to say, well, we're gonna spend it here, and, you know, when the state should, should be doing that, in our opinion, you know? And I, I live on Gracemont, which is right, you know, right behind the Dixie, and a lot of students cut through there. And this is something that came up when we had a contentious meeting last month, and had a lot of people worried about traffic on their road. So I said, you know, I live on a state street, it's a neighborhood, and you wouldn't really think that it, it was a state road. And all the time, when I was campaigning, I'd heard from people about how they wanted traffic control, or, you know, being able to put speed bumps in, because it is a neighborhood, or stop signs, or anything like that. And then you hit that roadblock of, oh, it's a state road, we can't, can't do anything about it. So there are, there are a lot of things holding us back when, when it comes to fixing streets.
I would say that we have a pretty good relationship with our state DOT, and we do have the ability to fix potholes here and there. We're not gonna have money to pave the whole entire road, but if you see a pothole, you should let, let it go, because if you don't, the odds that we know it's there, it might be pretty slim. We can't fix a pothole that we don't know about. So if you know about one, let no assistant Ryan.
Well, and DOT is doing like a pothole-filling blitz. Like, if you go to the DOT website, you, I think that they still have it open, where you can tell them where a pothole is, and they'll, they're trying to fix as many of them as they can, right now.
Though, every year, the city has a, they make a list, all the councilmen here, but we're not guaranteed we're gonna get those roads fixed. Because county transportation commission is the one who says, we fix roads, and which roads we fix. So really, we're wasting our time looking at roads.
It's Ronnie's pet thing.
To be honest with you, because several years ago, we were overruled by seven roads on, in one community, and the council voted unanimously to fix them. And the chairman of the transportation committee came up and said, we're not fixing any of those roads. So it didn't do us any good to even look at roads that year.
I'm gonna do two more questions, and we'll wrap it up. Is that good for everybody? All right.
Don't answer that.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna jump around just, just a little bit, council, I'm sorry. In looking at the city's budget, what components of the budget would you advocate to be increased, and what components would you advocate to be decreased? And if Hannah Brunson is in the room, she asked that question.
I'd say that there's nothing I'd advocate to be decreased. I mean, at least in the two years that I've been around already, I know that our, our, our city has, has had to cut as much as we can, because, especially from ten years ago, when we had the recession, our funding now has decreased a lot, and, and we're not funding things where we would want to. And that has helped, I think, with making sure there's not a lot of fat. You know, there's a lot of things that were cut that department chairs said, well, maybe we don't need this. But when it comes down to it, a city provides a lot of services that are needed, it's hard to say that we would want to cut any of them. And, and, and there's things, of course, that we would, I, I would personally want to fund more, like, I think parks is one, you know? We, we have a lot of people in the community that have, for a long time, volunteered their time, and money, and resources to, to help with recreation and parks in Greenwood. But it's been really hard for government entities in Greenwood to really invest because of those cuts in funding, invest in those things, so.
That was very good. And the only other thing I would add to that, I would love if we could, if, I wouldn't cut anything in, within the budget, advocate for any decrease, but I would, I would love for us, if we could find a way to increase our resources, so that we can refurbish neighborhoods, so that we can have better housing, so that we can demolish some of the old, old houses that are boarded up and, and abandoned. I'm very, when we all are very passionate about our cities, growing our city, and taking care of our city, and getting rid of the, the things that are, are just, let's say, we just want to beautify our city, we want our city to grow. And I wish we had more monies in the budget where we could enhance our neighborhoods, where we can refurbish our neighborhoods. Because we, right now, we're working on trying to, to make sure that, I don't know whether we'll be able to be approved for a CSBG grant, a lot of the cities like Greenville-Swanburg are eligible for those grants, where they can rehab houses and things like that, whereas right now, it's hard for us to even qualify, because of the population of Greenwood. And I think that's what's in there, am I right, right now?
We're not an entitlement community, so we don't get that funding automatically. We have to compete through a grant process.
Through a grant process. So yes.
And that's another thing, I think, somebody mentioned earlier about talking to state legislators, too. You know, we, I have to tell people all the time, a lot of these things, we need to talk to the state about. Right now, there's a, there's a bill going through to kind of increase our local government funding, so the state has not funded education and local governments like they personally said they would. They passed laws that said we will fund state, or local governments and education to this extent, and they haven't done it. And there have been lawsuits about it, especially in, in education, they still haven't fixed it. I could go on and on about that. But, but, you know, with local government fund, they're finally doing something. We have been going to them and yelling for years, I know, about, about getting back to where we're supposed to be in the city. There was an external article recently, the city and the county here are, have been out millions of dollars over the last ten years, because they haven't funded the way they should. And that hurts us, that hurts the things that we would want to do. It makes us have to raise taxes, and we look like the bad guy, you know? So we get the calls, and, and, but, but these are things that, you know, we're having to fund fire and police, we can't, we, we don't want to cut back on those things. But we bite the bullet and, and take the, take the hit when it comes to raising taxes, when really, you know, those things should, we should be supported better from the state.
Don't have a heart attack if you heard the word "tax." It's, it's not the latest cuss word. It funds everything, and everybody wants more services, they don't want less. And we're looking very earnestly at different ways that we can increase our revenue, and that might be that we increase what's called the sales tax. But at the same time as we do that, we would be reducing the property tax. So by doing that, you reduce the burden on the citizens that live in the city of Greenwood, because we can't keep going back to that well, which is a finite amount of people. There's some point or other where they can't pay everything that needs to be paid. So the way to change that is to get the forty percent of people that live and work and play, that live outside, excuse me, work and play, and they come into town, it's forty percent of people in all the restaurants and everything else, is to have an increase in the sales tax, so we get more from them, all the visitors. That unfortunately requires everybody to be singing on the same hymn book, you as a, as a group of people, citizens have to understand it, the county council has to understand it, and then we have to get it through a referendum. So, you know, I'm starting to preach already that it's a tax cut, for us as the citizens of Greenwood, but it's an increase on a sales tax, which is all you hear about, is it's an increase on a sales tax.
Well, I think this is a time of the year when, when it's budget time, that's the meeting you should come to. Because me personally, I get very upset when we have to start the budget for fear of having to cut anybody. Because cutting people means people lose their jobs, and I've never been for that. So if I had to do it, and there's not much we can decrease in the budget, because everything is needed. We need more officers. And I noticed that there was a question about police cars, but where do people think we get this money if we don't raise taxes? You know, we sit down, we have headaches, and we know, oh, boy, this is gonna be it. It's budget time. And I, people here say, it's a possibility. It doesn't mean we gonna do it, we're just thinking about it. And it goes haywire. But when it comes, for me personally, when it's budget time, I'm crunchy, because I don't want to see nobody get cut. You know, do we need this? Yes, we need every employee we got, and more, but we just don't have the money to do it with. I don't see anything in the budget, most of the time, that I would decrease. And that's because we need everything that we have. We need police, we need fire, we need this, we need, we need our sanitation department. And if anybody say we don't need those things, then I don't know where they live it. I know that, you know? So when it comes down to budget, it really gets crunchy, because we're not very friendly to each other.
Well, the other thing is, too, we, our, we can't, we can't print money like the federal government, and we can't be in deficit, because Stephanie won't let us. Our finance director won't let us. So we don't run in the, we don't run in the red. And a lot of governments do run, so we run fiscally, we're fiscally solid. And the only way we can be so is if we're lean, and we had, you know, but, funding is the biggest issue we have.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'll tell you, we, I don't feel that we have a spending problem here in Greenwood, but we, we definitely have a revenue problem. And, and as Nikki was pointing out, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you, our finance director, Stephanie Dorn, has cut all the facts, she knows every number, and has done an amazing job to, to allow us to work with what we've got, get the most out of what we've got, and just, you know, I'd love to get more police officers to support Chief Brooks and Jeff Crisp over here, and more, more firemen to, to make sure everybody was safe. And so that, that would certainly be one thing, but I can tell you, it is, we, we do the absolute most we can with our money. There's no, there's no lavish parties that we're, we're throwing, and anything that you may see, well, well, you're able to do this, we have some accommodations tax and hospitality tax that, that helps pay for that. But, but yeah, and, and again, as with other things, we're not unique in this, in this problem. So we're, as, as Matt mentioned, we're hoping that this is, we're finally gonna have a fix from our state legislature this year. It may not be perfect, but hopefully it'll, it'll be what, what everybody can live with and, and bring us some certainty. But anyway, I think that brings us to the conclusion here.
Well, I want to ask you to join with me in thanking our city council members, our mayor, and our city manager, and our city staff. The work of government is hard, it's complicated, it's difficult, but the work of government is interactive. And so this grant series, and tonight have shown you, is an interactive process. I think our city council members reflected that. I hope you'll continue to be involved. If you would please look at your evaluation forms, give us some feedback. Our presidential ambassadors are going to get in place in this room and below us, so you can scan for those files credits. Mr. Wilkie may still need a few.
He needs to just officially adjourn.
But we do have to return back to our mayor for an official adjournment.
And I will, and, and just to finish up, if anybody does ever wish to address city council, please let us know, there's a, there's a process for, for getting on the agenda. We'd love to, we'd love to hear from you. So anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, I would, since you had a few. Uh, I would, since you had a few earlier, I'll, motion by Mr. Miller, second by, by this, I want to give it to Ms. Hono.
No, first by Ms. Edwards, second by Ms..
Okay.
And well done, everybody, for coming. Thank you.
Everybody in favor of adjourn?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, so.
So you all, you all have the job.
Really?
We're gonna stay here for the weekend.
Oh, yeah, we got a lot, a lot of key.